Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Kensington, August 8th Town Council Meeting. So we're going to get started. First order of business, we are going to not do the Pledge of Allegiance because we don't have a flag. So we will skip that this evening. Do you have a moment of silence? Is there anyone we should? Think about?
Mike Moylan's mother passed away this past week. If we could just hold the Moylan family.
Okay. Also want to keep in our thoughts and prayers, Mike McCurry's mother is taken ill. So I know the McCurrys were getting ready to go to their son's wedding out in Chicago. So they're dealing with a joy and a bit of a health crisis at the moment. So give them our thoughts and prayers. Anyone else? Okay, well, if we can just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the mayor and town council. First item is the auditing committee. We had mentioned in our last meeting that Leslie Olson would continue on as the auditing committee. Paul Sexton, who's a financial advisor, was advised by Edward Jones that he would not be eligible to serve on our auditing committee. So he has stepped away and Leslie's going to go ahead and do another term. So we have filled that position with a person who's well qualified to serve. And let's see, Matt, they would, when they meet, we'll need to swear all three in. Is that correct? Okay. Okay. All right, number two, the Flynn Park.
You forgot the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I sure did. I sure did. Thank you. Council, you received the minutes. I know Nate, you made one change or a couple little changes to the Town Council meeting. I do want to make one change to that meeting as well. In the paragraph that Nate changed about speaking with S H A, it implies that we were asking them for the asking them to like think about a flashing beacon at Wheatley and Metropolitan and what we were actually seeking was a firm installation date of that beacon that has been approved and promised us for what? Three years? At least? So I just want to make sure it's phrase that we are looking for a firm installation date of the approved flashing beacon. I did not see any changes to the work session meeting minutes, but Susan, I do want to add that it was on Zoom. We don't mention how we held the meeting. So please make it clear that we held the work session by Zoom. Okay. Were there any changes to the organizational meeting minutes? I didn't see anything. No? Okay. All right. So if somebody would make a motion to approve the town organizational meeting minutes?
Sure, I'll move that we approve the Town Council organizational meeting minutes from July 11th, 2022.
There a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Town Council meeting, is there a motion with the, with the two? Well, the addition, you already saw the changes that Nate made.
Yep, I can move that we approve the minutes from the Kensington Town Council meeting from July 11th, 2022, as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. And the council work session with the one change or addition, is there a motion?
Sure. And again, I would move that we adopt the minutes from the council work session of July 26th, as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Darren?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Because I was so quick to move on, we've already mentioned the auditing committee and that is Leslie Olson will fill that third slot since Paul Sexton was not able to do it under the Edward Jones rules. Move down to the Flynn Park alcohol waiver. The Kensington Ken Business Group is going to have a small party for their businesses, meet and greet event at the Flynn Park in September. They were hoping to invite Baby Cat to do alcohol or beer tasting, which would require us to waive the alcohol restrictions in Flynn Park. So like we did for Juneteenth. Would just like to, I believe it's the 22nd is what its data is, the data is.
That's right.
22nd, okay. So if I could, I don't know if there's any discussion you want to have about it? It's not confirmed that they're coming, but just want to go ahead and get it ready. So we don't have to do it at another time.
In the event that Baby Cat is not coming or not able to do it, are they going to substitute some other vendor in the, in if whatever we approved tonight? Is it an alcohol permit at large? Or does it have to be named to a specific vendor, Matt?
Actually, I had a similar question about whether if this got bumped or something, we won't meet again until September. Do we need to approve it generally? Or does it, is it specific to the date?
Um, I think it was specific to the date. I don't know whether it's specific to Baby Cat. They were going to ask, and if they didn't, if Baby Cat wasn't available, they would either, they would look to be bringing someone else in. So that's why I just wanted to get it covered now. I mean, we could wait till September to approve it, but.
No, I have no problem approving tonight. I am in support of it. I just want to make sure whatever we approve, we approve it the right way. So to give them flexibility with their event planning.
Yeah, I don't think we need to mention the word Baby Cat, if that's what you mean. I think it's just to be able to serve alcohol in Flynn Park. On that date, on September 22nd, for their meet and greet with the businesses. Does anybody else have any questions from the audience? I'm not seeing any hands. Can I get a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve a one day alcohol license in support of Kensington Ken's business meet and greet event for Flynn Park, tentatively scheduled for September 22nd.
Do we want to call it a license or just a waiver?
Uh, I guess whatever it is that we're granting.
Waiver, since we are not the.
Yeah, we're not the alcohol. Yeah.
So I will restate that I move that we approve an alcohol waiver at Flynn Park for Kensington Ken event, tentatively scheduled to be held September 22nd.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, we'll move on down to number three. Darren and Nate, I think you guys are handling that.
I'm just scrolling through the, the meeting, the packet here. So, so the gist of it is that the county has proposed a ban on gas powered leaf blowers and leaf vacuums beginning in a year. I believe it is.
A year from the time they approve it?
A year. Well, I think, yeah, I've got to look. I think it's I can't, I don't know if it's January 1st, 2023, or if it, or January 2024, or a year from when they approve it. Let's see, they, they say banning the use beginning January 1st, 2020. I'm sorry. I don't know when the effective date is.
Okay.
It's one year after.
One year after the act.
After they approve it. Yeah, that's usually the one it would be.
Yeah, okay. Well, a lot of these jurisdictions, like Chevy Chase Village and Town keyed it to January 1st. So but the, the gist is the same. There would be, you know, a year transition period, and then a ban on leaf blowers and gas powered leaf blowers and leaf vacuums. They're doing this under the noise ordinance, which we as a town have, have opted into. They're not doing it under any sort of environmental or climate change authority. They're doing it essentially to simplify enforcement of the noise ordinance. So rather than requiring two parties and a measurement with the equipment, they're basically saying, take a photo of your neighbor using a gas powered leaf blower, send it to us and we will, you know, issue a ticket or enforce this regulation. To me, you know, I, I don't, I don't have one. I, I have an electric battery powered gas blower and I find it almost worthless. So I use a rake. So it's not going to affect me personally, but I, I watched the town crew collecting leaves in the fall. Where it's this highly choreographed routine of, of, of almost like five of them sort of raking leaves into the street, blowing them, and then using a vacuum to collect them. And, you know, they, they might go through a street and then the next day, somebody puts a whole new set of leaves out, which will not be collected sometimes for several weeks and several rainstorms. So my concern is the burden that it's going to place on the, the town staff and resources. So I put together a, a set of, of, you know, possible comments that we could submit in, in response to the, to the county proposal. And it's, it should be in the meeting packet that, that the public has and that, that all of you have. Just asking the county to consider various things, you know, it ranges from the mundane of would our gas powered leaf vacuum that we tow behind a truck be covered by this? My hunch is no, but rather than guessing, I'd like the county to clarify. It's, you know, do we, do we want to argue for a seasonal, you know, October, like the town of Chevy Chase has, do we want to argue for a seasonal exemption for gas powered equipment that would allow it to be used October 15th through the end of the year? Do we want to seek a, a exemption for municipalities generally, exemption for municipal staff and contractors that are working with the municipal staff? I'm just throwing this out there as something I'd like to hear comments from the council and public on. The comments could be due September 20th, which will, we will have another town meeting in advance of, but I'm just looking for initial thoughts now from, from everyone.
So Tracy, since you mentioned my name, I didn't draft this, what Darren submitted. I only provided a couple of additions and mine were just to clarify the kind of the research that's backing it and the supposed trade offs between the two and benefits of choosing electric or battery powered over gas. So we elaborated a little bit on section three to, to clarify some of those trade offs. We wanted a little bit more evidence from that we didn't see in the bill, text itself or the memo that accompanied it. And then also I suggested adding the point six that Anne brought up during the last council meeting, which I thought was excellent one about using it as an opportunity to educate on the benefits of composting leaves to remove the, the, at least a portion of the need to do a leaf collection in the first place. So those were the two additions I, I suggested.
Okay, does this, I guess if they pass this, the, the one in Town of Chevy Chase would be no longer valid? Is that right?
So having, it could both, it would affect parts of it and not other parts. Parts of it are more restrictive than the county. So they have, they have regulations regarding the use of construction equipment outside of certain hours, and that's more restrictive. So that would remain. But the extent that they are less restrictive in allowing gas powered leaf equipment to be used October to December, it would be overridden by, by the county proposal.
Okay.
I have a few reactions. But first I want to thank Darren for putting together the paragraphs outlining our discussion from the last work session. It's really helpful to have something to, to react to, to clarify our thinking. So one thought I had, and I'm happy to follow up with comments and track changes on the document. In paragraph two, while the focus is on the trade offs around noise and effectiveness, we do briefly mention health benefits. So I thought it was worth bringing up the concerns around the fumes from the gas two stroke engines, even though I know that this is being written on the basis of noise and not on the basis of two stroke engines. So that was one thought. And then following up on Nate's remark about paragraph three and really trying to really understand the evidence around effectiveness, I, I think we could underscore that a little bit more. I, looking back, both at what, what you put together and what the county has proposed in their analysis, it seems like there could be more done to really clarify what the potential both effectiveness is of different models. Is it really, you only get the effectiveness of an electric model if you're paying the highest end, $700 or $1,000 versus you know, the $400, $200? And what does that mean in terms of the transition? But also I thought that some of the information around the total cost of ownership was, was kind of hard to tease out. You know, there were statements in their analysis that suggest that there is some evidence that having an electric powered leaf blower fleet reduces operating costs in the, in the longer term. But that was not really clear and it didn't seem to be factored in in any way. So I just think we could point out a few places that they could be sharper on helping the public and the business community understand what these trade offs are and what these costs are.
And just, and everybody, just to clarify, the trade offs, I erroneously referred to paragraph three, but it was actually section two. But those are all the points that we were, we were talking about the effectiveness and the trade offs and refining a little bit more of that. And I thought we had some, something in there, Darren, about the exposure to inhaling the exhaust, but I think that's inferred in the last part of that, the last sentence of that, but we could maybe be a little clearer about that.
Yeah. There's the general language about health benefit. And so I think that's where we could be clearer about.
Yeah, yeah, because it's preceded, it's preceded by the benefits of, of the noise reduction for hearing. For avoided hearing, hearing loss, but it's, I think that we also want to talk about the exhaust. Thanks for flagging that.
With any of these edits. What I would prefer though is that we I, if, if we make a, a, an argument, I want it to be both with respect to noise and health, because if they're promulgating this under the health part of the regulations, then I don't want them to be able to say, well, the, I'm sorry, the noise part of the regulations, I don't want them to say, well, you know, this is not being done under health, so we're not going to consider it. I still want them to consider the, the noise aspects of it, since they're promulgating it under the, the noise ordinance. So I'm happy, I like it that I'm happy to, to receive edits on all that stuff.
So my only two other comments then are now, I guess I'll just be blunt. I have some real reservations with how the county has done this under the noise part of the code without stating decibel levels, because it is inferring that all two stroke engines are louder than any electric equivalent or battery equivalent. And I don't think they've, I don't, I see nothing in here that that proves that beyond a reasonable doubt. I think, Nate, you brought up anecdotal, I own several plugin, like Extension Core plugin, yard devices that are extremely loud and noisy that I would not use without ear equipment. To Nate's point, I wouldn't let my kids be around him while I'm using them. That would violate, I'm sure, some sort of decibel level, but don't, aren't captured under this. And, and so I guess part of my thing is if it's going to be about noise, I have a little problem that it's not stating it around the decibel level, right? That thing that we're trying to improve, but just saying, if you see somebody using a device that looks like this, take a picture and report it. How, you know, as to how we write that in a constructive comment back is, you know, what do you say to a neighbor who complains about yard equipment that's being used that is electric or, you know, non-two stroke engine? That's still violating the noise complaint? Right? I just think it's a somewhat flawed approach, an easy way out to target one specific type of device. My other gripe with the way it's written in the proposed, what are they calling? This is table two, their implementation cost summary descriptions. They, it was, you know, stated to them that it, you know, prohibiting the use of equipment that's still in useful life without offering a grant or rebate is not recommended. However, the grant and rebate program that they've put together is a three year program that would offer a $100 rebate for 100, or I'm sorry, for 1,000 applicants per year. So in a county with a population of nearly a million people, there's only 3,000, there's only 3,000 possible rebates. 1,000 per year. It, it's similar to the county and state's electric vehicle programs where they tell you there are wonderful rebates, but they're not funded. And the rebates aren't actually available. And so that's one of my problems is we're telling people, you have completely good, fine equipment that has useful life and you need to get rid of it. And we have a rebate program, but the chances of you actually gaining a rebate under it are well, yeah, it's 3,000 out of a million.
Again, if, if we can write that up, I'm, I'm more than happy to consider that. Kind of just to sort of drill down on your point a little bit, you know, it's, it's the, the, the gas mowers were allowed to evolve. They started off as noisy, polluting two stroke engines. And they evolved largely to four stroke, quieter, more fuel efficient engines. In this case, they're taking a sledgehammer to gas powered leaf blowers. There is no distinction between two stroke leaf blowers and four stroke leaf blowers, which are entering the market. They're all, they're, they're banning them all. And, and they're doing it out of efficiency of enforcement. They, they say we don't want to devote the enforcement resources to measuring noise from this equipment. We're going to ban all gas equipment and, you know, basically shut this equipment. So, you know, do we have the gravitas to push back against it? I don't, I don't know. I mean,
Yeah, and I, I agree. I, I think as much as we can capture our opinions on the points, but I agree.
My, my primary concern in this is basically to, you know, to, to, well, if to protect the town staff from overburdened efforts. You know, the, the average landscaper might come to a job site and use mowers and weed whackers and pressure washers and, and then, you know, to clean up, they're going to have the leaf blowers. Our crew uses leaf equipment for a solid two months, maybe three months of the year. And, and under, you know, difficult circumstances. I have spoken with some residents, they don't seem particularly they, they don't seem to care if, if town municipal staff and contractors associated with municipalities get exempted. And so that, that is my big ask here. The other stuff, you know, if, if personally, sort of looking at the the equity part of this, I think it's kind of gross. I think that we, because our Zoom calls from working from home are getting disturbed by this lawn equipment, we're going to shut it down. But, you know, I don't know that that's going to persuade the, the politicians. So, but my, my, my main focus here is is on, you know, what, what we're, what I'm here to do, which is, you know, municipal efforts.
We talked a little bit at the work session about maybe doing a survey. Is there still interest in doing that? Do we think it's a worthwhile effort to, to try to do that? I know we've had mixed success with data collection from surveys in the past.
We should have enough time if we do it. I think we have to come back by September 20th was the date that we have to have this back by. What, I mean, are you just asking in general, the thoughts of whether to the ban in general, or I mean?
Yeah, to the, yeah, to the residents outlining in a simplified way, what the county legislation is proposing and then posing some questions to try to elicit views on what's being proposed and some of the points that we raise in the draft comments.
I mean, I just don't, during blowing season, how you get around not having equipment that is able to, you know, perform at the high level that you need. Otherwise, you're going to be out there all day long, trying to do one street where you can do multiple streets in a day by having the right equipment.
I, I'll, I'll add, so I don't, I can't remember if I put this into my, my little write up or not. So there are two data points out there of municipalities that banned leaf collection. You know, before this county is going into effect, it would go into effect. Chevy Chase Village, which as we all know, has more money than God, has transitioned to manual leaf collection, collection. They're out there with rakes. And they pay a price for it. Town of Chevy Chase, their contract with the contractor requires the contractor to use electric powered leaf equipment when practical or feasible, I think the word is. And the contractor has basically said it's not feasible. So the town went back to the contractor and said, okay, give us a price on manual leaf collection. And the price there doubled relative to what they had before. So I, I, you know, it, it is useful, I think, for the county when they're considering something like this to consider who's had experience with this. And to your point about a poll, normally I'd probably support it if I thought we could, you know, put it in, you know, write it up. The, the, the reason I, I guess I would suggest we don't necessarily need a poll now is because we have options. We have opted into the county's noise ordinance wholesale, including amendments. If we don't like what the county does, then we can pull out of the noise ordinance in whole or in part as we see fit. And, and so if we're going to do that, it's going to require a code amendment. And, and that might be a, a better time for us to consider the, the particular views of residents. I think as far as comments to the county, they're going to get, you know, hundreds of comments. And ours will get, get, you know, some respect maybe, but I, I just, I don't know that we want to put our effort into a poll at this point. I'd, I'd rather do that if, if we don't succeed at the county level.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with that, especially since I thought that the letter or the six points here were, were meant to kind of set the structure of what we would put in a letter, right? So, and that letter would be, would that, would we approve that? We want to prove that letter until the September council meeting, right? So it would be circulated and we could get comments and feedback from the, from our residents during that point on just what we send to the county. In terms of what the thoughts are and the different issues that we want them to consider, just to help to educate our own residents about what we see as some of the trade offs, so that when they see the ordinance come for the change of for the change of code potentially, then they, they, they'll be able to weigh in a little bit more informed.
That makes sense to me. And Darren, what you're saying also makes sense.
So Darren, do you want to refine it a little bit more after? Or?
Sure. Into a formal comment submission format and we'll present it included in the materials for next month as well. But that gives us a little bit of time to make final revisions before it's, it's due on the 20th of September.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, once we're done speaking, I'll open it up for comments now from the, so you may get some from the residents that are online that has some comments for us, you know, tonight. So. Um, is there any other comments from the council? Okay. Any comments from the residents that are on tonight? Jack? That Jack, oh, go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Joe, not Jack.
Yeah, no, I, I thought I saw your hand, but it's something else in the background. It looked like your hand going up. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Furman. I'm sure you're not confusing you with Jack Gaffey.
No, 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 no.
Nonetheless, I do think it's important to keep in mind that the proposed ban does speak to environmental noise and health concerns. So, you know, it's, it's not something that's just strictly, strictly noise related. My major concern about this is enforcement, just like everything else. I mean, enforcement tends to be the weak spot, the weak link. And this reminds me a lot of the county's pesticide measure of a few years ago, in which the enforcement mechanism was very, very mild. And it was done, I think with a citation and, and for educational purposes only. And I saw some language in the material that was included in the packet for, for tonight's meeting that, that suggests that this is a similar measure that in, in terms of its enforcement, that it's not going to be very effective in terms of really putting an end to this, if that's what the county wants. It's just going to be a measure to alert people to the fact that this is probably not the best approach to take in, in terms of leaf collection. So I, I think the enforcement component of this might well be addressed in this proposed letter that the town council has been considering. And again, the weakness of enforcement is, is, or the dubious nature of the enforcement ought to be highlighted. And I was glad to see that there's little appetite apparently among the town council for conducting another survey at townspeople's expense. I mean, we have not had, as someone on the council mentioned, great success in conducting opinion surveys in recent, in the recent past. So thank you, Mayor Furman.
Okay, thank you. George, you have your hand up?
Soon as I get unmuted here. You know, besides leaf collection, I think there, there, there's, uh, there's a noise oppression when you have a contractor coming in and not doing leaf collection, but they've got anywhere from two to three leaf blowers doing general maintenance on the lawn. That's pretty impr- uh, intrusive. Um, I mean, I've, I have, I tried to find a study, you know, you can find the noise level of one leaf blower, but I have yet to find anything when you have multiple leaf blowers going at the same time. And, you know, I, leaf collection is one thing and it's, you know, get in, get out, get it done. But generally, when somebody's having a makeover of their lawn and they've got, you know, two or three leaf blowers, it, it is oppressive. And that's, that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, George. Do you see any other hands? Okay. I do not. All right. So Darren, have you, have you got enough?
I think so. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Okay. So. Uh, all right, council, we've gone through the, the top three that's on the agenda and that required a, an action. So we'll just go through the council for any comments or updates you want to, to give from whatever committees or from whatever you all have been up to. So we'll start with Connor.
Sure. From the DRB, it'll be in the Around Town Journal. There's a couple of updates on, on projects. I won't spoil it because Darren did a very good job of writing it up. So please take a look at the journal. That'll give you an idea of where those projects stand. But we will be working on scheduling a DRB meeting in the next couple of weeks. It's just going to be an introductory. There is not any development that is currently in front of us to review. A, we have a few new members. We'd like to get them into the fold and introduced to the other DRB members. We will do kind of a general overview of the sector plan, just to kind of baseline everybody on, and the sector plan, especially the new people, to review those projects that are recently passed or somewhat in the pipeline that we have seen before. And, and just kind of, you know, lack of a better term, level set everybody so that, you know, we are all prepared as new applicants do come before the DRB this coming year. So that date is not set. I'm going to start querying all of the DRB members to find a date. We will host it by Zoom. As soon as the date is known, we will make, you know, I will post it on the town listserv or the community listserv. We'll have it on the town website. It's, you know, open to the public and we'll run it, you know, as any other DRB meeting where it's meant for the DRB, but, you know, I will try and, and reserve some time at the end for any questions.
Okay. Very good. Nate?
Sorry. Did you have anything else, Connor?
Well, I guess the only other thing I'd like to mention is the event that occurred, the flyers that were found in St. Paul Park Sunday morning. So, you know, we've already put things out on the listserv and has followed up with those members of the, the racial justice committee, but we wanted to make sure that this got out into the community and everybody's aware of it. So Sunday morning, two flyers were found in St. Paul Park. Both flyers had the same message. That message was, is, it does not need to be repeated, but was hurtful, was racist, was hateful and, and, you know, there were, there were no mincing of words of how terrible the messaging was. The, the signs were an eight and a half, 11 by, you know, inch piece of paper. One was taped to the communication box that's by the entrance at Oberon and St. Paul Street. The other was affixed to the front of the, the little fire truck play apparatus in the playground area. If that is not bad enough, the hateful nature of the message, whoever put these flyers up affixed razor blades to each of the corners in an attempt to harm whomever might try to remove these, these flyers. Very luckily, nobody was hurt. Two different community members found them. One is a nearby neighbor. I was walking my dog. He was walking his dog, gave me a call, told me about it. He had already taken that one down. Another, the, the one that was found in, in the playground was taken down by that person. She was wonderful enough to, to reach out and, and contact mayor dot council and, and let us know about it. You know, I, I went around and checked the rest of St. Paul Park. Darren went around and checked. I think the, many of the other nearby parks, we found no other flyers. The mayor has already reported it to Montgomery County Police. She's been in touch with our commander of the second district and our local lieutenant. They are taking it up. And, and Matt is working with the Montessori school and everything outside and any video footage that we can get to, to provide more information to police. I take this again, as just a moment to say thank you to the two community members who took the signs down. I'm glad that they were not hurt. I'm glad that they brought it to our attention as quickly as possible so that we could bring it to Montgomery County Police's attention. And more so, the larger picture of we, we don't tolerate this kind of messaging, this kind of hate. This has no place in our society. It has no place in our town. If you see anything like this, please say something. Reach out to anybody on the council, to the mayor, to Matt directly, that please do try and let us know so we can, you know, bring all of these notes back together. But, you know, and I know Anne's can, you know, I hope Anne, you might have some comments, but I know the racial justice committee is going to take up, you know, what might, how might we react to it? And I, you know, the biggest thing is, you know, this is kind of our front doorstep of the town, St. Paul Park, especially with all of the families and children and people that go through it. I do believe that the very, the number of people who saw it were minimal. But it, it doesn't matter. It happened and it shouldn't have. And I don't ever want to see it happen in our community again.
Thank you, Connor. You know, I, I work with, um, at St. Paul's United Methodist Church and two of our staff members are African-American. One is my pastor and one is our organist. And it breaks my heart to think that there are people out there who not only want to cause harm, you know, or hate you, they want to kill you. And it just, it's, these are friends of mine, you know, they're, they're my boss, somebody I've known for years. And it just, you know, it's really just puts you in this, I've never been in that position where just this large group of people just want you dead. And it, I, I'm so sad that this has come to our community. And it just, it breaks my heart to, um, to have to share that with people who I work with, who I have a loving relationship with. And it just, um, I, I don't want to see this in our community. I know, um, that, you know, the, Anne will talk about it. We're going to have a, a racial justice committee meeting on Wednesday. And somehow, some way, we need to figure out a way in which to let these people know that this is not tolerated here, you know, in our town or in our county, in our state. I don't know how to do it, but I, we need to come up with something because it's just, um, that we just cannot let hate win, especially within our own community. So that's, that's just my comments of that. Nate?
No, no, it's, it's, it's absolutely infuriating and heartbreaking. It has no role in our community, like you said, or in our country for that matter. But it's especially in a front that we just held our 19th event there a month and a half ago. It's so utterly offensive. I, I have an update. I'll, I defer to Anne though, because I think it's important that she go next and provide that update that we were talking about. I'll go later. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, thank you. To, to underscore the, the gravity of, you know, what has happened, I think you can, you can hear it in everyone's voices and, you know, I think we, we should all look on, on one level to reach out to the people in our community who, you know, those messages, hateful messages were targeted to and make sure they know that we're there to support them and that we're going to stand up against this. And so I did reach out to the, the mother who found the flyer on the playground, whose two-year-old or young son was with her. And he, and had a conversation with her, which she appreciated. And that's why, um, after talking with Mayor Tracy today, we decided to put the racial justice committee meeting together quickly, even though we know a lot of people are out of town right now. We do think it's important to find a way to draw more people into the conversation, to be more vigilant about what's happening. I pointed out that this is a trend. This is the closest and the meanest way that it has hit Kensington. But if you've been following local news, there has been white supremacist, antisemitic graffiti and firing happening at a pretty regular cadence in Rockville, Garrett Park, Bethesda. So there's too much of this happening. And so Mayor Tracy and I are, talked about having a conversation with the broader community through the RJC committee meeting as a start this Wednesday to identify how we might band together with other communities, other municipalities, other civic leaders to really bring more of a spotlight on, and a need to sort of amplify that we will stand strong against hate and that we will work to become a, a safe and welcoming community. So there are ideas ranging from, you know, coordinating with other municipalities and communities to meeting with the police department and the FBI to really understand how these threats are currently being tracked and how we can help with, with those efforts. As well as just learning from the organizations that have helped communities mobilize and respond to these types of incidents so that we are preventing them from happening again. So I really invite the community to join us in the racial justice committee meeting. It'll be held via Zoom Wednesday at 7:30. You can reach out to the town for information on that meeting or me, and I'll make sure that you get the Zoom invite.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anything else you wanted to report on this evening or do you want me to move on to Nate or?
That's the main thing. I will, Nate, I'll defer to you on where we are with, with green team recruiting.
Okay.
Oh, I have one other thing, a happy, happy thing to share. Sorry, I forgot. This is, this will be fun and you'll see it in the next e-blast from the town, but we will be holding the second annual community back-to-school block party that the racial justice committee is coordinating with Kensington Can and the town of Kensington. It'll be on the lawn of Kensington House again. And we're looking to do that Sunday afternoon, August 21st from three to five. So that's actually a week before school starts. But it should be fun, similar mix of activities as last year with the DJ, some informal games. We're going to keep it simple with food and have AJ there to provide ice cream and we'll have some other snacks. So we really, uh, and we'll encourage the community to come out to that. You'll see flyers go up soon and more on the listserv.
I think I have the potato sacks in the town hall if you want those. I think I have those at town hall, a couple of games that we had last year.
Great.
I can check that.
Okay. Thank you.
And is, is AJ back?
He told me he would be able to do that, that day.
Oh, good. That's great.
Is he, is he in Sierra Leone or somewhere?
No, he got, he was in a bad accident.
Oh.
And, uh, I mean, really it totaled the, his new ice cream truck.
Oh, no.
So, uh, he was not able to come to the Fourth of July Bike Parade. His wife came instead. And, uh, he, he sent me some pictures and he, yeah, he was pretty beaten up. So, uh, but he said he's doing much better. We're actually going to be a collection spot for backpacks and bicycles for Sierra Leone. It'll be in the journal when you get it in about a week. And so we'll be a, the town hall will be a collection point for those items that he can take to sit back to Sierra Leone. So, um, there's a picture of him delivering them last year. So, um, anyways, so, but yeah, I, I don't know if he personally will be able to come back, but he definitely is doing much better.
Okay. And yeah, and, and our back and forth, he just confirmed that, that they could do it. So.
Yeah. So. Nate, anything on green team you want to bring up?
Yeah, just before that, really quickly, um, there'll be an article in the town journal on the, on the Connecticut Avenue corridor study that we did that we have published now. It's on the town website. We're going to be doing a joint press release on that with the Department of Transportation, the county department of transportation, where they're leading the drafting of it. So that'll get kind of blasted around through and posted throughout the county and actually the state. So I, I think that'll get hopefully a lot of, a lot of press. We've, as I mentioned, we'll also have an article in the journal on the green team. Basically it's a recruitment article. We're asking, we're, we're really starting the recruitment process for getting a, a solid cadre of people who can really help us identify areas for improvements throughout the community on sustainability and marching towards the sustainable Maryland designation, which involves quite a, you know, quite a process of going through a worksheet and identifying areas that we can build up points or improve to get points and ultimately get approved for that. I wanted to thank Alex for her support on, on, on some of these things, especially for managing the, the uploading and everything on the website for the, for the TLC grant report, for the Connecticut Avenue one. And then also for attending the, uh, the session that EFCO and Sustainable Maryland program led on the grants that we might be able to access eventually, if not this year, but possibly in future years for, for improvements that are identified through this whole process of the green team. So, that I think is a, that's all I have, I think. And I don't know if you had anything else stat on the green team?
No, I just ask for help and spreading the word. Once you, we see that journal article and if you know of people in the community who would be a great asset to that effort, please talk to them about what we're trying to accomplish.
Good. Thank you. Good, thank you. Um Darren, do you have anything you want to add? We heard that part.
Um, I, I will say, and I, I don't want to, you know, invade Nate and Ann's turf, but um I would just note the, the um presentation last month by the county on climate change in Montgomery County and how they're looking to involve and partner with um the municipalities. And, you know, we just don't have the um knowledge and staff to, to tackle this on our own, and we're only two thousand people in a county of two, a million. So I, I think, you know, drawing on their expertise and availability is, is going to be important going forward. Uh, so, looking at the various bills that might um either help us or might um you know, something that we can tag along, what will continue to be important. Um, you know, the saying is think globally, act locally, and I think that that's what we can do with both the Green Team and the town in general.
Well, so.
Well, well, some of those bills, just, well, we have to be under them um if they're passed. I mean, in the sense of, I mean, it's kind of like the global bill that
Most of them, I think, probably, right? Because they're code, they're related to code for building.
Some of them are, are code and some of them are opportunities. For example, if, if we're looking at, you know, purchasing power um through aggregate with other municipalities, it's, it's just a market strength that we would have in order to do this at, at reasonable, well, at less unreasonable costs. Um, others, you know, there, there might be uh obvious requirements for developers, but that, though there, we're already, we don't have our own zoning, so that those are already going to take effect in the town as well as in the county generally. So it's, it's a mix to answer your question.
Darren, I missed that presentation. Do you mind sharing it?
No, happy to.
All right, thanks so much.
Yeah, why don't you send that to the entire mayor dot council?
Yep, will do.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, I do want to thank um Darren and Connor for on Sunday going around to some of the other parks just to confirm that there were no other flyers that they could find. Um, so, thank you for taking the time to, uh, to do that, to make sure we got them all down. And Connor, for getting that out to the listserv. Thank you. So um, Matt, do you know if uh, did you reach Diane at Montessori School regarding the video?
So Montgomery County, um Bethesda District has assigned a detective um to the case. I spoke to him earlier today. Um, and we will be providing him with the recordings from the two cameras uh tomorrow morning.
Good, okay, great. All right, thank you very much. Um, just keep the council informed if um they send an email directly to you. Just make sure we all get it. Thank you. All right, okay. So moving on um to to from the town manager and staff. Matt, number one?
Uh, Mayor, we just want confirmation on um the format for the Monday, September twelfth council meeting, whether the council is interested in sticking to Zoom or going back to a hybrid um model. Uh, we just would like to establish that this evening.
Okay, um, do we have any guests that we know of that it will be coming to the September meeting?
We potentially might be discussing the gigs uh, the letter with regards to the county council members with regards to gigs. So I would anticipate we'd have some residents that would like to comment on that, preferably in person.
Okay. Um, I don't mind doing uh in person. If, uh, is everybody going to be in town?
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and, you know, at the very least, do every other. And we might, uh, in the winter months, we may uh stay on Zoom, but let's, let's go in person then in September and uh hybrid. Okay. All right, uh, number two, Labor Day?
I'm happy to report uh with the help of Councilmember Crimmens to announce that M and T Bank will be our platinum sponsor for the Labor Day Parade this year. Um, in addition to M and T Bank as our platinum sponsor, um, right now we have Fitzgerald Audemar rejoining us as a gold sponsor and Mulholland Tree Experts as a gold sponsor as well. So uh, we're moving forward uh with the permits and right now we have thirty-five uh, uh groups for the parade, uh, which is almost half of what we had in twenty nineteen. It's a little slower than we anticipated, but um, we're going to keep moving along. Hopefully can get a few more groups. Um, and also need to request to council members uh to go over our new employee handbook with Susan and I. Uh, it's forty-eight pages, so if there's two council members that would like to read that and work with us, um, it's ready to go.
I need two hands.
I draft them here, so, yeah.
We've been working on this for um many, many years, had a final draft. Um, and would just like to uh have a couple of council members review it uh before we bring it to the full council for approval, probably in September, so.
Happy to help.
Thank you Connor and Ann for volunteering.
I wanted to make one more note. Um, the electrical vehicle charging stations at the Kensington train station are now operational. Um, and the EV stations at town hall should be operational in the next two weeks. Um, and uh, they're going to let me know as soon as they're ready. And we are going to start the process of designing the uh structure for uh, the composting crew over at the train station. Um, just, we kind of had a crew member out a couple of days this week, so, so maybe next week we'll start that structure and um get the permitting going, so.
Is it to the left of the charging stations closer to where the trees are, the three holly trees?
That's the proposed location right now, yeah, so.
Okay, okay, good. Um, I want to, have you run it by Shirley? Have you taken her over there?
But yet.
Okay, well, I, I asked because the, the, the farmer's market, you know, has a, you know, um you know, locations in which, you know, the uh, the plant lady parks her car. Uh, Vera's parks their trucks, so they are handy to get their things. So I know the um you know, it, the, the charging stations aren't in the way, but they had to maneuver a different setup in order to accommodate. So, you know, the charging station. So I, I just think it would be very helpful to have Shirley out there. So she's not surprised on a Saturday morning when um the vendors come to her and say, what happened? Where am I supposed to park my truck? Because it could just be a matter of a few feet pushing it off to the side. So I would appreciate if um she is in the loop on that. Because I'll be the one that hears about it on Saturday morning. So I just think it's good communication though for our farmer's market vendors, um, so they can be uh accommodated as well. Okay? And they will be wel, they'll be welcome to use those, use it as well, right? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they, that's one of the main points for having the, especially the juice guy for Nate to be able to put his pulp and juice products in the juice remains.
The orange rinds. Yeah, no, I, I agree. I, I have no objections to it. I just want to make sure that um that the farmer's um market manager is aware of what's happening.
Yeah, I agree. I was going to say, speaking of communications, Matt, is there going to be anything that goes out? Um, as a e-blast to everyone about the EV charging stations, how to, how to use them, how much they cost? You know, how long you can park there and so on? Or is it very self-explanatory that if someone were to pull, for to pull up? I, either way, I think it'd be good to let everybody know around town.
We can, we can draft something um and send it out either on an e-blast or in the next, it's a little late for the September around Town Journal, but um, you know, we can maybe put, put it in an e-blast. We'll definitely get it up on the website. And um, yeah.
I, I think uh doing a, doing an e-blast first, putting it on the website, and then definitely an article in the journal. Uh, maybe from the Green Team, uh, just letting them know that the uh journal was already twelve pages. We didn't have uh, wouldn't have had space um this month, but um, we hope to do a, you know, a late October, November uh issue. So um, yes, so please uh make sure uh we get something in all three of those areas to promote them. All right, uh, does the audience have any questions from uh, for Matt from the town manager report? I don't see any hands. Uh, Alex, you are, Susan, have any, any comments you need to make?
Yeah.
Okay, I will let people know that Alex and I have been working on a uh, the interpretation sign at Clum Kennedy. And uh, we hope to have um, you know, we'll be sending out the, the draft of the signage um shortly to the Greenscape, and I'll include the mayor dot council to look it over. And then we will send it off and uh hopefully have it installed in um by October. I don't think it'll take too long. So um, that's been a long-term goal of the Greenscape Committee uh as a not a final, but as one of the items that we had planned to put in the park. Uh, give a little history of why it's called Clum Kennedy. Okay, all right, uh, public appearances. If you have something to discuss that was not on the agenda, here's your opportunity. So, Jack? Now I see your hand.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep, can hear you.
So I have two astronomical announcements.
Okay.
On Thursday the eleventh will be a, a full super moon. This is the fourth super moon, fourth and last super moon this year.
That's this Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay.
At nine thirty-six PM will be the the peak of the full moon.
Okay.
And on of Friday, the Friday the twelfth into the morning of of Saturday, the thirteenth will be the peak of the Percy and meteor shower. This is usually the biggest meteor shower of the year. They're predicting sixty meteors per hour. Unfortunately, there's a nearly full moon, which will make it hard to see the faint ones. And as usual, the best viewing is, is in the, in the interval af- after midnight and before dawn.
Okay. Yeah, that's too bad because those are, those would be a lot of fun.
Well, but, but you don't have to wait till midnight. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. A little bright where I am. I don't think you get to really see it as well as if you were somewhere darker.
Dark sky.
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty bright from, from my backyard too.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Joe, I see your hand.
You do indeed, Mayor Furman. Thank you very much. Um, a, a few things. One is a question to uh you or the town staff is to does anybody know when the work on Frederick Avenue, southern most part of town is going to be completed? Um, Washington Gas has been there for most of the summer and that street is at least this, the, the section from um Frederick Place all the way over to Kensington Parkway Access Road. That part of the street, Frederick Avenue, has been torn up and uh, it's really in bad shape. I just wonder when we're likely to see some uh end to this mess.
Okay, well, I know they're doing work over there, but I don't know their end time. Matt, do you know an end time for them?
I don't. It's a major project for them. Uh, they're replacing six hundred ninety uh linear feet of new gas line. There's ten connections and three new services. Uh, so this is a major infrastructure project for them. I spoke with uh their project manager and he didn't have a timeframe a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I can follow back up, but right now we don't know, so.
One reason, Mayor Furman, I ask about the uh, uh, the, the, the the long-running construction project there is that there have been significant lulls or intervals in which they're, you know, their construction teams are absent and not uh, not really doing anything. And these lulls have gone on for days, if not weeks at a time. And the construction equipment uh has been just parked in some parts of this um south side of town near Frederick Place or Frederick Avenue. So it's, it's really a nuisance and uh, it's, it's kind of hard to understand why they why the start and stop um nature of this uh, of this work is. So if, if um, if that could be explored a little bit as to uh why they get going and then kind of have a lull, that would be very interesting to know.
Okay, well, my guess is the crews go on to other locations, but I don't know that for sure, but uh
I guess they do, but the question is why do they do that? Why would they not continue to uh work on this and complete this major project? You know, all out. It's just, it's just a little befuddling.
Okay.
Uh, second of all, I just, I just wanted to say, and I, and I think he is probably gone from the meeting tonight, but I thought George Buckholder deserves an awful lot of credit for his standing up last month to um, at the town council meeting and pointing out the potential noise nuisance that residents um in the heart of town would face from the proposed concerts that would be uh undertaken there in the, in the heart of town and and uh George stood up uh to uh what I thought was, it seemed to me to be a pretty unanimous uh opposition to his viewpoints on the council. And uh, whether that's true or not, I just thought that his uh, his standing up like that and offering a dissenting point of view was, was commendable. And uh, thirdly, Mayor Furman, I just wanted to point out that we're seeing another recurrence of a chronic problem uh in Kensington, and this is noticeable on the walks that I take with my little dog a couple of times a day. And that has to do with the grass cuttings that are being left on sidewalks, town sidewalks in the, in the town. And uh, this is, this has been an issue periodically over the years. Um, seven years ago, I brought this up to um uh, to the town council, and I think that Councilmember Bartram was, was uh, he was on the council then and Mayor Furman, you were a council member and, and this was discussed at some length at the council meeting back in July of um, of twenty fifteen. And at the time, um it was, it was stated by the then mayor and one of the council members who has since left the council that the town already has the authority under existing regulations to enforce this matter of the uh grass cuttings that are left on the on the sidewalks. My understanding now is that the town is not enforcing these measures and not enforcing the clearing of glass, of grass clippings from uh from the towns, um, from the town streets, sidewalks. Uh, the reasons for doing this are, are at least threefold. I mean, they create a slip hazard. Grass cuttings left on sidewalks when wet are obviously a slip hazard. Secondly, they are a potential pedestrian safety issue because some people walk around sections of sidewalk where there are grass cuttings just accumulating so they don't have to walk through it with their pets or themselves. I mean, they just sort of veer out into the streets. And that poses a potential problem for pedestrian safety, as you can imagine. And also there's the problem of diverting from um uh, putting this material, these grass cuttings, uh having them flow into uh the waste streams. And the phosphorus from ga- glass, grass cuttings can be really potentially a hazard for that. So um I, I would hope that the town would uh, would resume enforcement if that's, that's the case of um, of uh, of this, of this potential municipal hazard that we're seeing with grass cuttings that are being uh left to accumulate on, on streets. And it's also a matter, I know this is not enforceable, but it's also a matter of neighbor consideration that you just don't leave your, your, uh, the sidewalk in front of your house covered with grass clippings because other people don't really like to walk through that. So I guess I'm kind of curious as to why the town is really not enforcing it when it was recognized not so many years ago that it did have the enforcement opportunity and enforcement uh hammer to do this.
I don't recall the grass cut clipping conversation that we had enforcement, that it was a pedestrian safety issue. I think it was a aesthetic, you know, issue, but I don't recall. Darren, do you recall it being a uh pedestrian safety issue?
I don't know that that was the, the primary motivation for cleaning up.
Well, you can take a look at the minutes. I just sent the PDF to everybody in the chat. It may not have mentioned um you know, pedestrian safety, but that's a pretty obvious issue. But it did, uh, the, the discussion did include the uh uh potential polluting hazard of the, of grass cuttings that are left on the street, on the sidewalks, and then they wind up in a waste stream. And also the slip hazard. This was all discussed at the, at the council meeting in July of uh twenty fifteen. And um, so uh, and I know you were there, Mayor Furman, and so were you, council member.
I just, I don't recall it being a pedestrian safety issue. Um, I remember the aesthetics. I mean, my neighbor doesn't blow the grass off her sidewalk and I've never felt unsafe. It looks, it, I'm talking. I'm talking. It looks untidy, but it doesn't I'm talking. It looks untidy, but it doesn't feel unsafe. And if you want to get into the grass going down the sewer. Then probably all those people with any sort of blower, whether electric, gas or battery should not be blowing the. The grass and the leaves into the street, which is what they do. So I think you get more from that than you do from left on the on the sidewalk. And I think. Quite honestly, the thing that probably we should work on enforcement further is for the the trees and the other growths. Not the clippings, but the. Things that protrude into the sidewalk that make, you know, a four foot sidewalk, a two foot sidewalk because they've allowed bushes. Growing into the sidewalk. I would prefer to put my enforcement efforts into that over. Clips.
Why? Why was that be? Because I know this is something.
Because I differ with you, Joe, and that is not a pedestrian. I just have a different.
I'm speaking now, Mayor Furman.
You asked me a question.
Well, and you gave me an answer, and I'm just saying that this is. This is really a diversion from the central topic here that the town recognized seven years ago. That it had the enforcement mechanism to address these problems. This is a chronic problem, a recurring problem. And now the, you know, the town seems not to be very interested in in enforcing this. It's, you know, it's 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 more than an aesthetic problem, really.
Well, you're absolutely right. I have no. Interest in enforcing clippings. Maybe people on the council do, but I do not. Anything else? Okay. Jack, your hand still up. I didn't know whether you had another question.
I want I wanted to respond to the first point that Joe that Joe made about the Washington Gas. Eric Avenue.
Okay.
One of the reasons why they worked for a while and then. And then stop and come back is it seems they didn't get things right the first time. And you know, they dug something up, they paved it over, they come back and they dig it up again for a second time, in some cases for a third time.
Okay. Well, if anything like the W S S C, they don't have the correct map. So. I'm sorry, Darren. Go ahead.
No, I was just. The least surprising news ever is that Washington Gas and W S S C. Fix projects repeatedly until they get it right.
Yeah. If you don't succeed.
Yep.
Well, we all like our water and we all like our gas, so and we don't have choices otherwise. So that's what we have. Alice, you have your hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to. Say thank you. I'm passing. I will pass along the words that Mr. Campbell was sharing about George. He has he already got off the call, but I will share that with him. Thank you very much. Been working very hard on this.
Yes, thank you, Alice.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I don't see any more hands. All right, we will move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Mayor Council, before you this evening is resolution number R dash twenty one dash twenty twenty two, a resolution. Resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington. Authorizing a contract with W R A Associates LLC for consulting engineer and project services. For the rehabilitation of three bridges. This resolution is replacing a resolution the council adopted a few months back. With the same engineering firm. Upon further review, W R A. Determined that they could not meet their proposed price for project management of the three bridges. So what this resolution does is create a contract between W R A and the and the in the town. To allow them to redraft and clean up an existing R F P. To bid out an R F P to vet and recommend another engineering firm to serve as project manager. For the bridge contract. Count, town attorney, so Ellen Ferguson, I have been working with W R A for a few months on this. And she drafted the contract and is happy with it and we're requesting permission to proceed from the council this evening.
Okay, council, does anybody have any questions regarding the resolution? Not seeing any hands. Does anybody from the audience have any?
I have. I'm sorry, I was trying to mute. I just I just not about the resolution specifically, Matt, but just about the timeline. For the what what is the key map out again, the process for how long it'll take for the design? For them to procure the design and then for the design to be done and then for the repairs to be finalized.
So this is just to put together and draft an R F P to hire an engineering firm that will serve as the project manager. My hope is that that will be completed in the next three months. Once a second R F P is submitted for a construction company to proceed with. The actual repairs between that and the Maryland Department of Animal Protection permits. Considering that we're working in a body of water with three bridges, we're probably twenty four, thirty six months before this is completed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was hoping to to learn more about. Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? Joe, did you have a question?
I do. So twenty four to thirty six months before the whole project is completed. Did I hear you correctly, Matt?
Correct, yes.
Do we do we have even an estimate of the overall price tag on on this for the three bridges in the south side of town here?
So the original estimate, which was put together, is not an actual estimate. They estimated around a hundred and sixty thousand. The engineering firm believes that it could be double that. Once this is completed. The bridge reports that put in the estimates are not accurate. They told me they use baseline numbers. They don't go out and get market rates. They put that in without really going out and get pricing when they put in. The bridge reports. So we're probably looking at a project that's going to be two to three hundred thousand dollars as opposed to a hundred and sixty.
Right, right, okay. I thought that at one time there was a fair amount of urgency to this project. At least when I believe when you first brought this to the. Intention of the council that that there was a. A bit of urgency, not that the bridges are in danger of collapsing necessarily, but that the work, you know, wanted to get it done because it has sort of been overdue. Is that a fair recollection?
Yeah, we were looking to get the repairs done fairly quickly. W R A upon their inspection determined that, you know, although there are some needs that are more urgent than others, the overall projects are not. An urgent matter for us. They graded all three bridges at ninety or above, so they're structurally sound. And. You know, we'll we'll see where we go from here. Most of the issues are with ADA issues or, you know, vehicle issues. The parapets are made out of stone. They need to be made out of concrete. There's only one minor. Structural issue. It's with the bridge down at Kensington Cabin Park. Everything else is just bringing everything up to code.
What's the problem with that one down at Kensington Cabin?
There was a minor structural issue on the underside. You know, again, the bridge still grades at ninety or above, so they're not overly concerned about it, but it's going to require a little bit more work than the other two bridges. And possibly a lane closure. We just don't know yet.
Okay. Are are these the same people who gave that lowball estimate? Are they are they the ones grading it at ninety or above?
I don't know what lowball estimate you're asking you're talking about, but.
Originally was a hundred and sixty thousand and now it's going to be double that.
So those, again, those are not accurate numbers. Those are just done through the bridge report when they're evaluating the bridge's estimates of costs. W R A is. Sorry, go ahead.
The same people who gave that estimate. Of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, are they the ones who are giving the ninety percent efficiency reports to?
Not exactly. So W R A is the firm that puts together the bridge report. But they are not the ones that did the actual inspections. There are two separate engineering firms within the bridge reports. You have all three bridge reports. You'll notice that there's two other engineering firms that are named. And those are the two that came up with the numbers, so.
And was the state or county involved in the original estimates on these projects?
The bridge report is required by the state and done under the county, but the county is not involved in the estimates of the costs.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, can we get a motion on the resolution?
I'll move to approve resolution R dash twenty one dash twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Number two.
Council, a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington authorizing the town manager to accept a proposal from precision concrete cutting. Of Delaware and Maryland to remove certain sidewalk hazards within the town. This is resolution number R dash twenty two dash twenty twenty two. There are two separate proposals within the resolution. One is to fix sidewalks within the corporate limits of the town on town maintained sidewalks. The second. Proposal is to maintain or to repair sidewalks within the town that are on. What would be classified as county or state sidewalks. Under the current situation, the state and county defer to the town, to the locality. For repair sidewalks. So that's why we had them do two separate proposals, so the town would be aware of what was being cost directly to the town on our maintained sidewalks. And in addition to the ones that would be on like Summit Avenue or some areas of University Boulevard. Compared to what we would do on our regular residential streets. In addition, there are a number of sidewalks proposed that are outside the corporate limits. We are aware of that and we plan on addressing that with the contractor directly to have them removed from the proposal. And precision concrete is a contractor that we two previous times in the town. And this is requires an extra majority vote from the council because there was no bid for this project.
Yeah, we've used them before and they've done a very good job and I think they did a good job going out and looking at all the sidewalks and doing a good inventory. Although, which is hard to tell, they went outside the town and thank you, Alex, for auditing their reports. So we could, I believe it was ten locations that were outside the town that were be deleted from the from the contract.
So if you if you walk outside and you see little orange dots on your sidewalk in front of your house, those are the locations.
I have seen orange dots.
Yes, so all the little orange dots throughout town.
Yeah.
Those are the locations that they'll stand down and most of the issues are resolved. The reason of tree roots for the most part. And we just don't have the funds or the time to go around and replace every slab of concrete. So this is a way for us to, on the short term, fix problems as we address them when we pave the streets, so.
And a lot of the the brick sidewalks will be looked at later this fall. Is that correct?
They'll be looked at. They're looked at separately. Our street contractor usually does the brick sidewalks. This just kind of sands down the existing concrete sidewalks.
Okay, very good. All right. Go ahead, Matt, or Nate?
No, no, I just. Just a clarification, Matt, and then. I guess a question about who did the the analysis, but did you did you say that the county for the county and state? Ones along Connecticut Avenue in Summit, we still pay for that, the improvements?
So the state defers down to the locality for all sidewalk improvements. They will not repair the sidewalks. They'll push down to locality. The county sometimes will replace them. We've had, when we've asked them in the past for Summit Avenue. They have been responsive. They're more willing to make repairs and corrections than the state is. For example, in Knowles Avenue, the state, you know, just defers right down to us. They won't even, they won't even review it. I mean, I'd be happy to pass the. The repairs on Summit Avenue over to M C D O T and see if they're willing to reimburse us or take it over. But the state.
This never does. Like along Connecticut, there's no way they would.
Yeah, university, Connecticut, metropolitan. Yeah.
I mean, they will. We've been lucky. State has replaced. I don't know if anybody remembers along Knowles Avenue. It used to be brick. There was a brick sidewalk in front of the. When it was moose and green there and they did pull that out to make it ADA compliant. So they did replace the sidewalk then. But yeah, for repairs such as this, they're not going to come out and do that.
Because it's not considered like crisis mode, I guess.
Yeah.
E D A, yeah.
Right.
Okay, the the question was just, I I noticed in the report it said that the points, all of the two hundred and eighty whatever plus and plus. One hundred and six were collected by Matthew Hoffman, town manager. Did you do this? Or was it Tracy was referring that Precision did it?
Precision Precision actually walked around the entire town to find the locations. Like I said, we've used them two other times. Over the past, what, ten, twelve years in very small segments. They've done a couple of blocks. They've never done entirety of the town. So they walked the entire town, put together a spreadsheet, and then Alex and Annie did a small audit. Of about ten percent of the locations to confirm that, you know, their requests for for repair were accurate. And, you know, for the exception of maybe one, I think, on the audit that we decided was okay, everything was spot on, so.
That's great. No, I was I was somewhat hoping it was you or someone from the town staff so we could piggyback next time off of. Off of the efforts to when we do our walkability, bikeability audit, because I think it's the big part of it. So you just did, or they just did. A portion of it for us, so we don't have to do it. Next time, let me know. Well, maybe we'll coordinate the auditing process.
Yeah, I think it was Sanford that brought precision concrete into the town the first time, so.
Looking excellent. Yeah, it looks excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Just thank you to Alex and Annie for also walking the streets to do some auditing because obviously. The contractor has an incentive to find a lot of. Perfect hazards, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the audience? Yo.
It was an impressive and I thought surprisingly expensive inventory. I mean, it was really. Incredible to go through and to see so many places from so many parts of town, across town, which is really very. Very impressive in its extent. I I wonder, Matt, wasn't similar work done in town not so long ago? A couple of years ago. I know you alluded to these guys coming in the past ten or twelve years, but I thought it was far more recent than that. Like within the last two, maybe three years that they had done some sanding of of sidewalks that were, you know, had been. Elevated for some reason.
Yeah, I I mean, it wasn't in the last two years, but it was probably more recent than. And ten years ago, like I said, they've been in two previous times. The projects that we had them work on last time. You know, were maybe a block or two. It wasn't the extent of the entire town. I know we had them in Flyers Mill between Metropolitan and St. Paul a number of years ago and a few other locations. But never did we have them explore the entirety of the town, so.
And what's the bottom line cost on this? If the two contracts are merged, is that how to add it up or? Can you?
Thirty, let me get this back, thirty thirty four thousand five hundred and sixty nine dollars and thirty eight cents. And it was twenty eighteen, the last time we had them in town.
Twenty eighteen, so four years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. Given given that amount, I'm curious as to why there was no bid sought on this, why there was no bidding process. This is something I've brought up in the past and other contracts and. I just kind of think that seeking bids is a real healthy way to conduct. Municipal contracts rather than the no bid packages like this one. So why was there no bid?
This is not the type of work that a lot of companies do. We've used them twice previously. We've been very happy with them. It is up to the council. That's why I'm requesting an extra majority vote from them. I don't think it's necessary to bid this out when we know their work and their capability. And. I'm happy with their work and I'm asking the council to proceed with them.
Wouldn't it make sense in a economic downturn session perhaps that that we do seek? Bids because there could be companies out there that are pretty hungry for this kind of work and would do just as well. And what what they're doing is what's essentially sanding concrete. In many cases, not to denigrate what they're doing. It's very important and I'm glad to see it being done because they're, you know, as I mentioned earlier. Trip hazards and slip hazards all over town, and this is one good way to address it, but but wouldn't wouldn't it be a good time, a propitious time? To seek bids for for this kind of municipal work?
I mean, I'm very happy with this contractor. I'd like to keep them in town. I'm happy with the price. It's fair. And it's up to the council to decide if if they'd like to spit out or not.
Okay.
I'll just. I I at the recent. I'll, I'll just, I, 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 at the recent, uh, Maryland Municipal League Conference, I met with them. Um, they do seem, they do impress me as a good company, but also they were the only company at MML that, that did this kind of work and, and I, I certainly, I'm going to support the resolution. Um, I will say that, you know, when you look back at the previous resolution, we're spending fourteen thousand dollars to conduct an RFP for a project that is in the one sixty to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I appreciate the need for, you know, an RFP under some circumstances. But, um, this one I'm comfortable going forward with.
But finally, I, I was just wondering, um, how is, might this matter of, of, uh, the sidewalk work, concrete work? How is this related to, um, NZI and, uh, what I find to be, it's, it's generally inadequate work? I mean, is this, are we correcting problems that another contractor, NZI in this case, has, has left the town?
No, most of this work is due to tree roots that are uplifting the sidewalk. Uh, typically because trees are planted either too close to the sidewalk or the trees that were planted were planted in locations that the existing area can't, uh, sustain a tree that large. That's most of the repair work.
Uh, by that you mean like, what, fifty percent, eighty percent? I mean, what, what kind of proportion are we talking about that you blame on trees in town?
Most, most of it, so I would say a majority, so.
Okay. All right. Uh, council, any other questions? Uh, otherwise I'll take a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve resolution number R dash twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Thank you very much. Uh, Matt, number three?
Very much. Um, resolution number R dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-two. The resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, and authorizing the town manager to accept a proposal from Shore of Landscaping for certain hardscape and plantings at Clum Kennedy Park. Um, this is, I believe, the final phase, Mayor.
This is, this should be the final phase of the large, uh, plantings, uh, uh, in the park. We had planned a, a three-phase. This is the third phase. So going forward, um, we should be minimal amount of plantings, maybe some annuals or perennials and, um, maybe, you know, you never know, replacements of something that's, um, died, but this is the last of the, uh, of the plan. That and the interpretive sign, which doesn't require a resolution, but, you know, those are the, um, we put this on kind of a three-year schedule, and this will be our final planting for, for this year. I mean, for the, for the park. Uh, any questions regarding?
Are the, does the shore contract for the maintenance, do they, does it get folded into that for the?
Their, their, their maintenance contract will maintain these plants as in a well course. All these plants have a year, uh, that would place anything that were to die, you know, in a year, but, um, we had extremely good success despite the hot weather and, uh, I don't think we, we lost maybe a couple of the boxwoods that were transplanted. But otherwise, um, all the plantings pretty much, um, we lost a little bit of pachysandra. I think that was more to being stomped on than, uh, being, uh, you know, just dying, uh, for lack of water or care. Um, and, uh, but so, yeah, we, we did a, had a really good, um, planting season. And, uh, so, yeah.
Good. So we don't have to update their maintenance contract at all for this?
No, no, uh-uh. No, the maintenance contract will remain the same.
Fantastic. No, I just wish we could see it on a map. I can't wait to see it in, you know, live.
Well, I think next spring it, it should look, uh, even more beautiful. Uh, we have some, uh, we had actually a photographer, not to get off subject, but we had a photographer go around to get some new pictures of the town and, uh, he got into Clum Kennedy when the azaleas were blooming. And it's, it's, it's beautiful. So, um, get a tremendous amount of, uh, comments, uh, regarding Clum Kennedy. Uh, positive comments about the park. So, we still hope to add electricity. That's a, a separate, um, goal, but, um, it's, um, it's, it's been a, um, a pleasure working on that project, so. Does anybody in the audience have any questions too regarding the, uh, Joe? Can't hear you, Joe.
The park is looking really good. It's, um, uh, been very well maintained. Town staff has done an excellent job throughout the year. Clum Kennedy, this is a frequent destination for me and my little dog on our morning walks and sometimes evening walks. And it's, it's really, uh, really, really very nice. Curious to know what kind of hardscape additions, uh, are envisioned here because there have been some hardscape, um, uh, additions in recent years that, uh, really improve the appearance of the park, including the, um, the brick paver walkway, which, um, I frequently noted, has very few grass cuttings on it. Uh, but anyway, what, uh, what sort of, uh, hardscape additions are you, uh, contemplating?
Uh, right now, the only additional, I don't know whether I'd call it a hardscape, but we're adding a few more, uh, boulders into the, into the park uh, at the front. That's more to, uh, help erosion there at the, uh, at Frederick Avenue where it takes this long dive down. Um, so a few more of those, but right now, uh, we don't have further plans for hardscape, but this isn't necessarily the end. This is just, uh, of any improvements in the park. It is more of, of the plan from three years ago to implement. This is the end of that period. And then we'll, you know, as the park needs other things, we will look, you know, look to make more improvements.
The, um, erosion potential by the Bank of Silver Creek, it could be, could be significant. Um, and, uh, is that where you're intending some of the hardscape additions, some of these large, uh, boulders?
No, it's not near the, uh, the Silver Creek. I think the, the, uh, stone wall is in good shape. I'm not further down, but belongs to the, um, park, not to the town.
But I will note that is an area that, um, has been brought up by at least one greenscape committee member and we might be looking at, um, in the future.
Yeah, that, we just have to work with, uh, parks on that. Um, unfortunately, you know, they're not to get off subject again on the, on the, um, the resolution at hand, but, you know, they, they now like, um, vines. Uh, not so much bamboo, but they do like vines. They think it holds everything together. Unfortunately, it kills trees too, so it's, um, anyway, so, yeah, we'd, um, I don't know whether that's on the green team committee or greenscape, but, um, yeah, we'll have to work with parks on that. Any other comments? Uh, is, can I get a resolution or a, a, um, motion for the resolution?
I move that we adopt resolution number R twenty-three, twenty twenty-two to proceed with the shore landscaping work in Clum Kennedy.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Nate.
I, I didn't want to override that, so I forgot to, I had to wait.
I have so few things to do, Nate. I, I just like the one thing, I guess. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Great, thank you. All right. Uh, if there are no other items that we need to discuss, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Move to.
Okay. Who wants to take on that one for the minutes? You are Darren or Connor?
Darren.
Darren, okay. Would you like to second it, Connor?
I will second the motion.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, and, uh, you all have a good evening.